Don't forget, don't take these home. Give them back to Annette. Okie doke. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for City of Daly City on Monday, January 25, 2016. Can I have you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Canepa?
Here.
Mr. Gingona?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Torres?
Present. Okay, we're all here and accounted for. We've got a couple of presentations tonight on the agenda. The first one will be proclaiming February 2016 Black History Month in Daly City, and I have Councilman Michael Gingona making that presentation. And is Janice Daniels here? Oh, there you are. Why don't you come up to the front there?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Okay. This is a proclamation, and it's from the City of Daly City, and it proclaims Black History Month 2016. There are a few wherestas in here I'm gonna mention, and then it'll end with us proclaiming the week. Whereas the month of February is officially celebrated as a national event honoring black history and the contributions of African-Americans in general, and their part in the development of the United States in particular. And whereas in honoring local African-American history, life, and culture, Daly City will host its 24th Annual Black History Month Celebration Saturday, February 13, 2016, from 12 noon to 3:30 in Cafe Dolger at Westlake Park. And whereas in 1992 Daly City began honoring African-Americans with the Juneteenth Event at Lincoln Park Community Center, a celebration that marked the beginning of the city's commemoration of Black History Month. It goes on to say that whereas the 2016 Black History Month theme is "Hallowed Grounds: Sites of African-American Memory," highlighting that one cannot tell the story of America without preserving and reflecting on the places where African-Americans have made history. The National Park Service takes responsibility for preserving and teaching about the places that have been central in the making of African-American memory. And it says now therefore Sal Torres, our mayor, and on behalf of the entire City Council proclaims February 2016 as Black History Month in Daly City. And it's signed by all of us, and that's the proclamation. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor Torres, council members, department heads, and Daly City residents and community. I'm both honored and proud to accept the Daly City proclamation, and I invite all of you to attend the celebration. There's a beautiful poster that's been placed around town. I hope you had a chance to see it. I have some smaller-sized ones for everyone. This is a special month for African-Americans. Every day should be special. I would just like to again thank you for choosing me to accept the proclamation, and I'd like to just end with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. "The hope of a secure and livable world lies with disciplined non-conformists who are dedicated to justice, peace, and brotherhood." And it takes some bravery to be a non-conformist, but that's how change will be made. Thank you again on behalf of the African-American residents here in Daly City, and I hope to see everyone at our celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janice.
Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District's 100 years of public health, and our board trustee from that district, Christine Fuller, is here to accept that, and Vice Mayor Canepa will be giving it. Do you want to introduce her?
Thank you very much. As many of you know, Christine Fuller-
Can you ever introduce who else?
Yes. Megan Colwell is our Public Education and Outreach Officer as well.
Aye, Megan. Welcome.
Thank you very much. You know, first of all, I just want to recognize trustee Fuller. As you know, trustee Fuller has served on this board faithfully for how many years, Christine? Five years?
Nine.
Nine years. And she's just really been a tremendous asset, and we're lucky to have an advocate like you. So Christine, thank you for all you do. And so on behalf of the City of Daly City, we've declared a proclamation. I'll just read a couple wherestas clauses. Whereas San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District is one of the oldest mosquito and vector control programs in the United States. And whereas mosquito control in the peninsula first began in 1904 as a partnership between the Burlingame Improvement Club and the University of California. And whereas the Three Cities Mosquito Abatement District and Polgus Mosquito Abatement District formed a response to the 1915 Mosquito Abatement Act, later merging to form the San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District, later called the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. A lot of history, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the diseases transmitted by insect and animal vectors continue to pose a significant threat to human health and well-being. Now therefore, Sal Torres, mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Daly City, do hereby proclaim and commemorate the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District's 100 years of service, 100 years, 100 years of service, to the residents of San Mateo County since 1916. The City Council extends congratulations and best wishes for many more years serving the needs of the community. And it's rather historic. 100 years is huge, and so Christine, again, thank you for all your service, and so I'm delighted to present this to you. Can we give her a round of applause? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Congratulations. Will you allow some words?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council staff. On behalf of San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board, Trustees, and Staff, I'd like to thank the City of Daly City and the City Council for acknowledging the district's centennial. The district is proud of its 100 years of service, and we look forward to serving you and the county for many more years to come. I also want to re or invite all of you and members of the public to our centennial celebration in open house tomorrow, and that's going to be Tuesday, January 26, from 3 till 7, at the district office, which is located at 1351 Rollins Road in Burlingame. The celebration will feature laboratory tours, children's activities, educational displays and equipment demonstrations, as well as a chance to meet the staff and learn about the work they do. The district staff works hard every day to keep members of our community safe from vector-borne diseases like West Nile virus, hantavirus, plague, Lyme disease, and even the diseases transmitted by our invasive mosquito, like Zika virus, that is relatively new, Megan will follow up on that, dengue fever, chikungunya, and more to follow. Their work for San Mateo County has remained virtually free of serious mosquito and vector-borne illnesses. I also want to thank the city staff who worked so diligently in getting the word out about this centennial celebration. Thanks to Patricia Martel, our city manager, and in particular, our Assistant City Manager, Julie Underwood, for all of the Daily Wire on the newsletter, the Fog Cutter, Annette Hopona and your staff for putting the flyers out for us, and Rosa and Anna as well. I do want to thank Patrick Sweetland, which is our Director from our Water and Wastewater District, for all the hard questions that he asked, but they have been answered, I hope, and also our Public Works Director, John Fuller. But mostly, we've been through some difficult times, and you know, it's been rough nine years, but I am proud to serve as the City of Daly City Trustee Representative for the county, and I'll turn it over to Megan.
Good evening. I just want to echo what trustee Fuller said. Thank you so much. I am very honored to be here accepting this proclamation. You know, our district has very deep roots in this county, and when we formed as a district, malaria was endemic on the peninsula, mosquito problems were so bad that property values were dropping and businesses closed. And over the past 100 years, we've really been able to turn that around and create a safe and healthy environment for the residents here. So we really appreciate your support, and I hope all of you will be able to join us tomorrow in celebrating. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, that concludes our presentations for tonight. Let me move on to the agenda. This is the point where we approve the minutes. We have the regular meeting of January 11, 2016, minutes to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, those minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, the agenda is approved. We're on to the consent agenda. There are six items on this agenda for the consents tonight. Does anyone want to pull anything?
No. I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, all the matters on the consent agenda are hereby approved. We go on now to public hearings. Under this section, we have a couple of matters to hear. The first one, number seven, this is the approval of the Daly City participation in a countywide community choice aggregation program, and introduction of an ordinance authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program. If you do want to speak on this, so far I have two cards on this, but if you do want to speak on this item or any other item in the council, there are some cards at the entrances to the City Council chambers. Please help us fill that and give them to the city clerk as soon as you can. So let me start with our staff presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Before I proceed with the presentation on what I think is a very important item on tonight's agenda, and an important item for the community at large, I want to introduce to the council who have not met our newest employee, Stephen Stolti, and also to the public. The council may recall that when you approved a new agreement with Republic Services, one of the terms that I requested, and you approved, and was incorporated in the new Republic Services contract, was to hire an environmental compliance manager for our city that will in part have responsibility for overseeing the new waste contract with Republic Services, and that is primary among Stephen's new responsibilities. And in conjunction with that, because of the importance of other environmental issues in the community as it relates to both waste collection, diversion, composting, recycling, all of those really affect the city's climate action plan. And so we incorporated into Stephen's job description, in addition to the oversight of the Republic Services contract, the responsibility for all things environmental, including updating our climate action plan, working with all the city departments on environmental issues, and to ensure that any new proposals that come to the city that he would be engaged in as it relates to environmental impacts on the City of Daly City, to improve our position. As the largest city in the county, we have a responsibility to be the environmental leader. We've not always been the environmental leader, and in part, it's because we have not had dedicated staff. We've now been afforded the opportunity to bring someone on who is exceptionally well-qualified to do this job, having worked for San Mateo County and in the environmental services arena at a very, very high level on a national and international basis. So Stephen brings a lot of experience to this job. So we have engaged him since he's been on board in December to be involved with reviewing this community aggregation program, and what it means both on a countywide basis and for the City of Daly City. So while Julie has had a hand in being involved as a representative for Daly City at the discussions that have occurred over the last several months around community choice aggregation, and I also have had an opportunity to attend a meeting or two related to this, but I have even more experience from my time in San Francisco, when we actually looked into the idea of community choice aggregation when I headed up the public utilities for San Francisco. So in order to have someone who could really focus on this area more fully, Stephen has taken on that responsibility, and so I've asked him to help with the presentation tonight, to provide the council and the public who are here and those who are watching a better understanding of what community choice aggregation is, and what being involved in the countywide program may mean for our community going forward. But I did want you to know about Stephen and his background, and know that you will see him around much more frequently moving forward on issues related to environmental compliance in our city. So with that, I'm gonna let Stephen go ahead and start.
Thank you, Pat, for that introduction. That was very nice. Mayor Torres, members of the council, good evening. My name is Stephen Stolti, as you know. I also want to point out some people we have in the audience tonight. We have County Supervisor Dave Pine. We have Jim Egomire, he's the Director of the Office of Sustainability at the county, and Gordon Tong. He is a Sustainability Coordinator with the county, and all three of them have really been working on community choice aggregation for quite some time. Dave Pine has spearheaded this initiative and really has gotten it off the ground here in the county. So we're happy to have them here tonight supporting this item before your consideration. So, let's jump into it. What is community choice aggregation, or CCA? Well, CCA allows jurisdictions to team up and use their collective energy demand to purchase renewable energy. So in our county, Peninsula Clean Energy is the name for the CCA. They would go out, purchase renewable energy from places like solar farms, wind farms across the state, and then it's transmitted over the current power lines to customers. So nothing really changes there. It's the same lines. The PG&E would be providing a single bill and maintaining those lines, providing customer service, nothing really changes there. But customers then do have a choice for renewable energy in the end, and they benefit from affordable rates and greater local control. And I'll get into what that means. There's a lot of benefits. Daly City has a climate action plan. It's called our Green Vision, and it outlines goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that cause climate change. CCA is the most effective and quickest way to do just that, and it's because it really greens our energy supply. It addresses the heart of the problem. Another big benefit is that it introduces competition into the energy market currently dominated by utility monopolies. This is important because it provides consumer choice. And it's, you know, in the Bay Area, we really are on the front lines of climate action, and CCA is one of those, it's one of those things that really shows that we're really doing our part here, so we have the opportunity, an unprecedented opportunity, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Third, it's rapid. We don't have to wait decades to phase in clean energy into the energy mix. We can provide it immediately. So when Peninsula Clean Energy is operational, it will start providing clean power immediately to our residents, and that's what we need to address climate change. Rates are competitive, or often cheaper than PG&E rates, and I'll show some data on that in a minute. And then finally, surplus revenue from Peninsula Clean Energy can be first and foremost used to purchase additional renewable energy, but also reinvested into the community for things like local generation of renewable energy or other energy incentive programs. It would really be up to the board to decide how to direct that funding. So that stands in pretty sharp contrast to the current status quo in the energy market. So how does it work? Daly City would join the JPA, the Peninsula Clean Energy Authority, and then the incumbent utility would continue to do what it does. It would maintain the transmission lines, provide that single bill, like everything I said, so nothing really changes there. What customers will notice is that there's a new section on their bill, and it will be for the electricity generation charges that are now paid to Peninsula Clean Energy instead of to PG&E. All of the other charges remain the same. And then also PG&E, Peninsula Clean Energy would become the default energy provider in Daly City. However, customers would receive four opt-out notices over 120-day period, and they can return to PG&E at any time, so no one's locked in. So let's use this slide as an example about, to show you how the rates compare with PG&E. This shows data comparing Marin Clean Energy, one of the successful CCAs in the state, with PG&E. Now, the data's already a little outdated, because PG&E's energy mix includes 27% renewables now. On the screen, it says 22%. So we're just gonna use this as an example. It's a snapshot from the very immediate past comparing the rates. So Marin Clean Energy offers three options for its customers. The first one is called Light Green. It's a 50% renewable offering, and as you can see, it's cheaper than PG&E, and it's nearly double the renewable energy content. They offer another option called Deep Green. It's a 100% renewable option, and you can see it's price competitive with PG&E. And then finally, a 100% locally-generated solar option, which is pretty amazing, and it's more expensive. This is for people who want to go that extra mile and be really green, and perhaps value being at the cutting edge of these types of programs. Now, even accounting for the exit fees charged by PG&E to CCA customers, we see that Marin is offering more renewable energy at cheaper rates through its Light Green option. It's pretty remarkable. Outreach to the community has been extensive, so you can see the statistics on the screen here. County staff have conducted presentations all over the place, and in Daly City, they've presented to the Lions Club, the Daly City Neighborhoods Association, and then they also hosted a community workshop last week here at City Hall. And city staff have also conducted outreach via the Daily Wire and Nextdoor, so we have gotten the word out on this initiative. So how does this whole thing work? Well, the JPA, called Peninsula Clean Energy Authority, it's really, its sole purpose is to focus on energy. That's the reason why it's being created. Daly City would have the option to join with the county as a full member. We would be allocated one board seat to be filled by one elected official. They can appoint someone else as well, and the county would maintain two seats. Voting, I mean, this is pretty standard stuff, majority vote. There's an option for a weighted vote based on differing electricity consumption across the county, and then any changes to the JPA agreement, supermajority. Now, Daly City can actually withdraw from this entire effort prior to launch if Peninsula Clean Energy can't do what it says it was going to do. The county commissioned a technical feasibility study, so if the CCA cannot meet certain economic or environmental goals, we can withdraw. We can also withdraw our municipal accounts at any time, and there might be a charge to do that, though, but we still have an out. The costs, well, the JPA is legally and financially separate from the city. We're not liable for any JPA debt, and we don't have to contribute any money to the startup. The county has already taken care of that. Adding new members, pretty easy. It's by a vote, and it's expected to launch later this year in October. So I included this slide. I know it's a little hard to see, but it just shows the geography of electricity consumption and customers, how they're spread out and dispersed along the peninsula. And Daly City is in the top five for each of these categories, so the top five cities actually represent 60% of all electricity consumed on the peninsula and 55% of all the customers. So we really have an opportunity here to have a huge impact, and as the peninsula's largest city, I think now is the time.
So what are they doing in Menlo Park? I mean, it's a small town. Must be commercial.
Lot of lights on the sidewalk.
I guess so.
So we, through Peninsula Clean Energy, would be offering three scenarios for customers to choose from. All are pretty attractive. Scenario one is a 35% renewable energy offering. That would scale up to 50% by 2030. Scenario two, 50% renewable energy. That would also scale up to 75% by 2030, and then finally, a 100% renewable energy offering. And just a little tidbit, Sonoma Clean Power is another one of the CCAs that's operational and successful. In their first year alone, they reduced greenhouse gas emissions by 40%.
Wow, that's impressive.
So I think there's something here for everyone. I think customers will be able to choose something that works for them out of these three scenarios. And with that brief presentation, I think I'll leave it there. I know that there might be some technical questions from the audience.
Yeah, we have some cards on this, but I wanted to ask the council if they have any questions, first of all.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just thrilled we get the opportunity to vote on this tonight.
Go ahead.
Can you tell us who will be the suppliers of the energy? You said there were various organizations. Can you tell us who?
There are solar farms and other renewable energy generators across the state that Peninsula Clean Energy could enter into contracts with, so it really just, it just depends, I think, when it comes down to that time to purchase the energy contracts.
Okay, so there isn't, we're not gonna know until?
We won't know, but-
Not now.
A lot of, a lot of the existing solar farms in California aren't even being used right now, because there's no demand, so I mean, there's places to purchase the energy from, for sure.
So just to follow up on that, council member, as part of the process would be the responsibility of Peninsula Clean Energy staff, along with, you know, the board, to negotiate those contracts, those energy contracts. So at the time, when all the cities who were gonna participate, you know, when the whole program moves forward, that kind of negotiation would occur by people who have the technical ability to go out and negotiate those kinds of contracts. So while there's known providers, energy providers, that are an alternative to PG&E, we wouldn't really know until we know who's gonna be in, what we're talking about, the amount of energy that has to be purchased, and then the market is open to negotiate those energy agreements.
And you said there was a cost associated with withdrawing. What's the cost?
I'm, you know, I'm not sure, and I think that would probably depend on the energy contracts that they enter into, because that would be the cost. They would be buying energy over a time period that they were kind of locked in, because they're basing it on how many customers are in the CCA program.
Okay.
It's whatever the contract value is.
Yeah.
If the contract value is $1,000, which you-
I think we can invite Gordon from the county up to respond to that question.
Yeah, good evening, council members. My name is Gordon Tong. I'm with the County's Office of Sustainability. Just to clarify-
So I'm gonna ask you to speak a little louder and a little slower.
Sure. Okay. Can you, is this good?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. So the withdrawal for cities, so municipal accounts actually, so the cities' accounts that, for city-owned properties and the cities' accounts with PG&E or with PCE, they can withdraw at any time, just like any other customer, with no cost. But the withdrawal fee has more to do with the idea of the whole city withdrawing from the program itself. So there's a difference between the city withdrawing its municipal accounts and from the city withdrawing the entire city from the program, that which has a cost because of the amount of power that's been purchased on behalf of the city after, when it enters into these contracts. So there's a differentiation between these two.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gingona, you have a question?
I answered my question.
Oh, okay, great. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay. Stick around, because we may come back to you.
Okay.
So let me start with, and I apologize Supervisor Pine, I didn't see you until after you walked over there, so I should have started the meeting by introducing you, but let me call up Supervisor Dave Pine. And welcome to Daly City. It's good to see you.
Good to see you as well. So my purpose for being here today is to be available to answer your questions, along with Jim Egomire, who hands up our Office of Sustainability, and you've heard from Gordon Tong. And we're really in an exciting period in this examination and launch of Peninsula Clean Energy. We have six jurisdictions that have signed on, and this week, we have six others, including Daly City, that have the opportunity to take that step and approve the CCE ordinance. So, you know, from the very beginning, I've been most motivated by, you know, what I feel is our obligation as elected officials to do everything we can to reduce our carbon footprint. And this is just a very powerful tool, as you know, to do that. It makes, it makes being, you know, the renewable choice an easy choice. And then the notion of choice is just so powerful, because we get to kind of run things here locally, and our customers, our residents, have choice. You know, we'd expect the JPA to adopt two offerings, a default offering, and then 100% green offering, so the customer could choose between those, or if they, so if they wanted, go back to PG&E. And then the third thing, it took me a while to kind of just digest, is all the other benefits that Peninsula Clean Energy might be able to promote, whether it be energy efficiency or electric vehicle charging stations. And again, we get to kind of run our own, you know, shape our own destiny. So one final point is, you know, why now? You know, we hope that all 20 cities will join in the launch. Maybe a few will decide not to. The benefits of going now would be, one is to start reducing the carbon footprint right away. Secondly, this is the time when the JPA Board has to make a lot of decisions, and you know, you really want Daly City at the table. And then, and thirdly, as has been mentioned, as the largest city, you know, it would be, of course, terrific to have Daly City as part of this really exciting new initiative. So again, we're all available for your questions, and we really appreciate the time you've taken to study this. Julie Underwood's been a dedicated attendee at the Advisory Committee meetings. Underwood's been a dedicated attendee at the advisory committee meetings. So we appreciate all your thought and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, Sharon Keenan?
Good evening, Ms. Keenan.
Honorable mayor and council members. On Thursday night, while we met with them, and there were some questions that came up that had conflicting answers that I would like to have answered. On Thursday night, we were told out, there was the, told, a opt-out fee would be charged by PG&E's household monthly, depending upon how many kilowatts you use. They said averaged about $1.19 per kilowatt. The pamphlet, it cleared up about that 50 and 25% is the city's charge for opting out. On the Economic Impact Report, it estimates that the Feed and Turf Program, the study projects 370 jobs during construction of 20 MW, I assume that means windmills, of locally situated renewable generating capacity, assumed over five years. What is a Feed and Turf Program, and who pays for that? They said it would generate jobs. The chart shows construction is 8,000 to 10,000 jobs initially. Then it drops down to 80 to 130 for operating jobs, and a staff of 10 by 30, which will have to be paid, because they're not going to build it and construct things for nothing. They said they were insured for only $100,000. My cars are insured for more than that, and they're running a business. That's not a lot of insurance in case something goes wrong. The CCA County would be a public nonprofit agency funded by rate payers and not taxes. What do they mean by funded? How are they, how are they receiving funded from taxpayer, taxpayers for this? Out of our, our household, our property taxes, or what? I would appreciate an answer to these questions. I've listened to two presentations and contacted them with questions, and each time, more new charges and estimates crop up. It sounds like when cable came in. This is reasonable and always will be. Today, my cable cost me $174 a month. I'm giving you each a copy for the questions that I have asked. Why did the council choose to wait till the last minute to pass this, only to schedule a meeting at City Hall last Thursday from 8:00 to 9:00 at night, three days before the vote? Because I understand the vote is for February the 29th. This has been in the works since 2014. They had ample time for everybody to find out questions and all the changes that they hear each time that they listen to it. It said that one council member from each city will be on the board at no, at no pay. Well, let's live in the real world. I know that the board, when they are on, on different committees, they get paid for showing up for the committees. I don't think that anybody is going to be working that many hours for nothing. So they're going to have to be paid something. So I would like to have answers to these questions. Thank you.
You've given us copies of those questions, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much, Ms. Keenan.
Thank you.
Mr. Keenan, Ray.
I'm assuming we're going to get to the answers when we're done with this.
Yeah, I want to just get through Mr. Keenan's and then Dana, and then we'll go through the answers.
We'll provide the answers to the questions.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead. Come on up, Ray.
Ray, come on down.
I don't have that much to say.
[inaudible]
First of all, Mayor at City Council, I'm glad to be here. The second thing I want to know is about the, what these people are going to get out of this. You guys are good speakers. I'm not. So you're going to have to kind of bear with me. The PG&E, we go through, and the services, the billing poll, billing, polls, lines, and mailing checks out, the PG&E does. All I'm asking is, what do you guys do? Simple. I mean, and another thing is, you're buying your electricity from PG&E. So how can you make it, well, that's what the girl told us the other night. So don't say no. I said, so if you're getting from PG&E, how can you make it clean? I mean, I like to know, if, if, if they don't give us clean electricity, you're not going to, whatever that means, I don't even know. But let's see. And then, like my wife said, that they said, first of all, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay.
Uh, there was a woman behind us, and she says, where, to the young man and the lady that was here, and they're both very good speakers, that where are you going to put all these equipment, and that you're going to make this through the next five years? No answer. We don't know. So how can they sell us a project or electricity if they don't even have any place to make it or build it? And then this, like the man, or you, the young man, said, well, we'll get it from different agencies. Do I got to stop?
Can you just go ahead and keep going?
Okay.
Kind of wrap up for us.
A, a different agency. How do you know what price of electricity you can get from these other agency that's going to help us out? And, I mean, and let's see. Well, then they mentioned 8,000 to 10,000 people to set this place up. 8,000 to 10,000 people, what are they going to do? Take over the whole United States? I mean, I don't understand that. If you guys vote this in, I think you guys, it should be put to a vote in the whole Salmon Tail County for the residents to vote, not for just a few people. I'm not saying there's nothing against you guys. You guys are great. But I also think that the people of this city or county should have the right to vote, whether they, they want to get into this or not.
Okay. Thanks, Ray.
I guess that's about it.
Okay. Let me go on to Dana Smith, and then we'll start answering some of these questions that the Keenans have brought up, as well as anything Ms. Smith brings up. Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. First of all, I have confidence in this, in this program. I mean, there has been community discussions for, gee, a couple of years. I remember having something way back at the Democratic Club a couple of years ago. And the things that I'm really excited about is this whole idea of bringing competition to the whole area of energy production. And I think it's really going to invigorate the whole clean energy production in the US. I think I heard someone mention that there were solar facilities in California that aren't generating the energy that they could generate, just because lack of demand. So I think having this, this, working together and buying this energy is really going to make clean energy feasible. You have to have a market for it. And I think we'd be doing a great service to join in with these other communities and help create that demand. I'm also really excited about the reinvestment in community-based energy production. I've always had a dream of having a wind turbine on the top of my house. I don't know if you'll approve it, but anyway, it's a, it's, I have a whole file at home, this thing on wind turbines. And the other thing is, I'm looking very forward to being able to personally have that choice, even though I'm a lower-income person of going deep green. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, before we start answering some questions and addressing some of the issues, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any objections?
No.
Okay. So let me start with, why don't we start addressing some of the things that Mrs. Keenan brought up, Mr. Keenan brought up, and concisely, but generally, so we can answer a lot of the questions that might be floating around. Who wants to start?
So I think it would be helpful on the issue of the opt-out costs, because apparently, from what Mrs. Keenan has said, she was, did not understand what, she felt that there was an opt-out cost for each residential user of this, of the program. So if you want to speak to that issue first.
So the opt-out fee, I think, is being referred to as actually the exit fee that PG&E levies on all CCA customers. The reasoning behind this fee is that PG&E has procured power on behalf of these customers. So if they leave PG&E's service, then there's some stranded cost involved. And to ensure that customers throughout PG&E's service territory aren't penalized because people are leaving PG&E's service, this fee is levied on CCA customers. So it's not a fee necessarily with opting out. It's, it's a fee that's associated with all CCA customers. But it's worth noting that the fees, I think Stephen had a slide that showed in Marin Clean Energy, the different rates, and then the fee, PG&E fee associated with it. When you add up all the generation costs and the distribution costs, and the exit fee, there we go. So the PG&E fees, I think is what being, is what is being referred to, if you add up all these costs, it still comes in cheaper in Marin than, than PG&E.
So that's the 627, and
That's right.
Some other fees thrown in with that as well.
That's right.
And just, just so we're clear, the whole, and this kind of goes to Mr. Keenan's question about, you know, the ability to, to have it or not have it. This, this is something that people can choose to do.
Individually.
They don't have to do it.
Exactly.
So it, so, and I, I think what you're trying to say, when you were trying to, when you were saying, we should let the voters decide, I think what we're doing here is, we're giving you the option, so then individual homeowners can decide for themselves in their homes, do I or don't I want to be part of this? So you don't have, just because we might approve Daly City being in the JPA, does not require you to have to do it. You can stay with PG&E forever. So what it does give you, however, is the option to decide, do I or don't I? And e- even if you do, if you do, what Gordon's talking about, if you do decide to go, PG&E's going to send you an exit fee, saying, well, here's the fee to get out of PG&E world. That's the one-time fee. It's a one-time fee, yes?
It's a recurring fee.
It's a recurring fee. So it's a part, part of your decision that has to become, do we pay this every month to get out, to go for renewable energy?
Just in a quarter.
If you decide not to go to the renewable energy side, you just stick with PG&E, and there's no exit fee, and nothing changes for you, it's all the same. You just have a choice now.
The only, the only facilities that would automatically move to this option would be city facilities.
Would be what?
City facilities. All of our operations, you know, we pay for electricity just like you do. So city facilities would opt into the program.
Or go deep green.
And, but everyone else in the community would have the option. If you want to do nothing, you just do nothing. You just continue to pay PG&E and stay with PG&E.
Can I say something? How will you get this out to the people that they got the option of going one way or the other?
Well, we, you know, in the same way that we have put out information to the public about what is being proposed here, we would continue to do that outreach directly with our residents through all of the means we have available. We do it in social media, we do it on the Daily Wire, our electronic newsletter. We're going to do an article in our community newsletter that we mail out. I mean,
Will PG&E have inserts? Will PG&E do inserts?
There's a small section of the PG&E's bill that we can't, we have control over, and we can put some advertising there. But I also want to add that this is merely the beginning of a very extensive outreach campaign that we haven't started yet. Our office is right in the middle of hiring an outreach consultant, and we'll ramp up the marketing a lot in the next coming months. So there'll be advertising done through newspapers, through, you know, advertising on bus stops, radio, TV. All of that will be done in the next couple of months when we have our outreach team done. So regarding, why is this the first time, you know, it's been brought up, it's going to be a lot more outreach being done. So people have, know that there's a choice in terms of which energy provider they want.
And, and I'm assuming that each customer will receive a in or out, like it said, four opt-out options.
Right, correct.
That, those will be mailed to our homes.
Right.
Every, every utility rate payer will receive those notices. So you'll get them in the mail before anything happens. And it won't happen automatically for you. You have to opt into it to be part of this program.
Excuse me. Do you opt, opt in, or opt out of PG&E, or opt out?
Well, in order to, you would opt, you would essentially be both. You would opt out of PG&E, and then you would be a part of this program. If you do nothing, you will continue to get your energy provided by PG&E.
Actually, actually, I'll, I'll clarify a little bit. So if the city joins this effort, and eventually it launches in October, you will automatically be enrolled in Peninsula Clean Energy. You have, now, now you have the option to opt out, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You can still opt out, but you'll be, the default energy provider will be Peninsula Clean Energy. So all, in October,
You'll get a choice.
You'll have your choice. You'll have the choice to opt out then.
Yes.
And stay with PG&E.
But there's no fee for you to opt out.
So we have, we have to say that we want to be
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let, let, let me, let me do this, so we don't lose control of this. Let's, let's kind of go through these questions, try to answer them. And I think what we need to do is then have you talk to these gentlemen afterwards, and they can get more specific with you, and you can get more details for you guys, okay? So let's keep going on, on answering the rest, because you had some other good questions here, I think we should ask, like, the insurance question and the job question, too. Why don't we attack those, too?
Sure. So the, it's the insurance question. It's not quite insurance. It's, it's there in case, it's there to cover the fees that are associated with going back to PG&E once a program fails. So the $100,000 is for seamlessly transitioning customers back to PG&E in the event that the CCA fails. So, so whatever fees that PG&E might levy for the customers to join PG&E again because of the CCA failing, that $100,000 is to cover it. It's not an insurance policy.
Okay. And then, one of the other ones was about the county would be a public nonprofit agency funded by rate payers, not taxes. Can you give some color around that, too?
Sure. So right now, you're paying fees to PG&E because of, because you're buying electricity for you. So instead of paying PG&E, you're paying PCE. So PG&E gets profit from this, these fees that you, or these rates that you pay them for electricity. So they pay that back to their shareholders and to run the program, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So PCE would just take, PCE would basically just step in and take those funds instead of PG&E. So you'll pay PCE to purchase the electricity on your behalf, and any profit that comes out of it goes to the agency, which can be redirected as the agency sees fit through, you know, renewable energy programs, or lowering rates, or however the board decides.
Okay.
So it's not, no, no taxes will be levied on, on the residents.
Okay. Can I have a suggestion? You know, because I like these questions. Is there one, is there a way to maybe make these generic enough, that we can maybe put it on the Daily Wire as sort of a Q&amp;A, or FAQ?
Yeah, we can do an FAQ.
Because I think the public would enjoy
Yes, we can certainly do that.
Because if, if the Keenans and other people have these kind of questions, let's turn these into something, we can use this as a way to get the publicity out and get more, and then invite people. Do we have an alias, an email alias, where people can write in questions?
Yeah, they could write in to me.
Oh, they can, so maybe we can do two things, is do the Q&amp;A, so here are some of the questions that came up, City Council. You might have questions like these. Here are the answers, and then have your email, and invite people to send specific questions to you, and you can answer them?
Sure, or, or county staff, yeah. We could give them their email, too.
Yeah, I would note that we have developed an FAQ that's more general, and answers a lot of these questions here, and it's available on our website, and I could definitely send to Stephen to distribute. And we also have a more specific FAQ about rooftop solar and net energy metering, because we get a lot of questions about that. But we're happy to make that available to Stephen to distribute as well.
All right. And then can you make yourself available to these folks after we get done with this particular topic, in case they have more questions, too?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Let's, did you have anything more you wanted to say? Sorry.
I mean, I have the, some questions written down, if you want me to just
Sure, go ahead.
Keep going down. So there was a question about the jobs created. That's listed in the community guide. So the 8,000 to 10,000 jobs figure has to do with the construction phase of new renewable projects. So the text that projected that it'd create about 8,000 to 10,000 jobs for construction only. So it, so after the construction, the project is over, all that's left is the ongoing maintenance required. So that's why the figure dovetails down to, I think, about 80 or so, instead of 8,000. So that's the reasoning behind that.
I think one of the questions they ask, construction where? What construction? Because joining the CCA doesn't really have a construction, right? You're just going to rent a building someplace and have a little office. And so you're talking about when there is a savings, when there is, the money would normally go to profits, the board will decide if it wants to invest in local projects, such as a solar project, or put solar panels on top of a business that wants to generate a little extra money, that kind of stuff. So we're not talking about a big building some- So we're not talking about a big building someplace, right? Because I think that was what you were asking, right? Yeah. And if where that big building's going to be, is it going to be next door to you?
So there's, there's a difference between power that's being, new power that's being developed because of this program, specifically in terms of what the agency wants to develop itself, and the power that's going to be procured on its behalf. So if Peninsula Clean Energy didn't exist, there would be no additional demand for renewable power. So once it does come online, it becomes a lot more demand for new projects to be built around the state. So 8,000 to 10,000, that's not specific to San Mateo County. That's statewide or wherever the power is being built. So a proportion of that might be in San Mateo County. We have some space, we don't have a lot of space to develop renewable energy projects, as you well know, and it's expensive to build here. But it's been, it's definitely possible to do some projects, but the majority of it will probably be in-state but out of the county. And on that slide, actually, you can see MCE's local solar project. All that power comes from projects within Marin County and it's expensive there too. So that's why you see a huge price premium there.
Okay.
So on a related note, one of the questions that Mrs. Keenan asked relative to these construction jobs for local renewable projects was, you asked about the 370 jobs during construction of 20 megawatts. So you, you said assume that meant windmill. It means 20 megawatts of power. So a local project, a local renewable project, that when it was built would generate power up to 20 megawatts. Okay, so that would be a local project. It wouldn't be a windmill. It would be megawatts of power that through whatever means that project was generating renewable.
See, that's not very clear to people because you know because you're working with it. But when you're at home, you get a folder and you look at, you don't understand what just initials mean.
No, and we can be much more clear about that. In our, in the materials that we provide as far as outreach materials. But again, Daily City will do our best effort to take whatever is given to us to distribute, but, and then our own. But there will be a lot of information that's coming from different sources, from the county and from their consultants, that will be explaining those things. So we'll try to make them simpler and put them on our website and, and send them out to the public.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that is most of it.
Okay.
There was the one question that Mr. Keenan asked about, well, you're just buying the power from PG&E, so how can it be clean?
Oh, right.
Okay, oh yeah, so, so we're not buying power from PG&E. I think that's a miscommunication. So we'll be buying power from the same providers that PG&E is buying from, but not PG&E itself. So the way we get cleaner power is instead of buying gas-fired power plants which produce the power, we'll buy more from solar facilities or wind farm or hydroelectric facilities. So the way we make it cleaner is by reducing the proportion that we buy from natural gas or from oil or some other more, less, more dirty power plants. So if we increase the proportion that we buy from solar facilities, that's how we get cleaner power.
Okay. I think we got almost all of those, so we're good. Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone who came. Thank you to the staff. Is there a motion for the city attorney to read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, you have more questions?
Well, I don't know, we didn't get a chance to say anything, right?
You can say them now.
Well, I'm sure that there's people up here who have things to say.
Yes.
I don't know, I went to some of the workshops in the very beginning and one of the things that, that really impressed me was, I mean, I was looking at that 100%, the deep green and thinking, God, can I, can I do that? Can, will Daily City step up and do that? And I said, oh, it's just those rich people in Marin who are doing that, you know, they can afford it. But come to find out, Richmond, California, had an even higher percentage of people who stepped up to the plate to go deep green. And I go Richmond, working people, Daily City, working people. I think having the opportunity for us to choose to pay, you know, a couple bucks extra to get 100% green, I think a year or two from now, we're going to be celebrating the residents here who've made that commitment. I can't wait to go deep green.
Looks like it won't be that, that hard to do. You know, to your point, Sharon, you know, you said that this, why would they spring this on us now? You know, a year ago, close to a year ago, I met with some people at San Mateo Community Choice. We have a letter from one of them, Gladwin De Souza and some other people, Janet Creach, and when I met with them and after meeting with them and, and learning that Dave Pine was behind this, I, I introduced this to the council. We spoke about it back in February of last year. I've been keeping my eye on, on the way that it's developed. I'm 100% in favor of it. And I think that one of the things that, that was brought up was the fact that it's a joint powers authority and there's value in being part of the joint, if you are going to be part of this joint effort, that you be part of it early. Because if you're part of it early, you get to do things like set the policy and it's an opportunity to be, to be in the lead and to have a greater voice in the operation. You know, we have a little bit of, of experience with joint powers authorities. You know, the North, North County Fire Authority is a joint powers authority that delivers fire service. Bosca is a joint powers, powers authority that deals with conservation, supply of water. And we have seats at the table at those two areas. And I think that it's something that is important for us. I think that anytime that we can cut our costs and be environmentally aware and, and community-minded, I think it's a good thing. So I'm for this and I would make a motion, hopefully.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? No objections. Mr. Gangona, since you were the.
I actually have to read by title only.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, gotta read the title.
Sorry. Let me, let me take my cheloxative and slow down, so go ahead.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daily City, authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program.
Okay. And Mr. Gangona, since you brought this to us, I'd like to know if you'd like to introduce this ordinance?
Yes, I would. I'd like, urge us to adopt the resolution.
We also need to have a motion to adopt the resolution to be part of the JPA and the program itself. And also, part of the resolution is to appoint the elected to be on the board for the JPA.
Okay.
Make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
A green and enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Canapa?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
A deep green, yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Torres?
Aye. Okay, so the resolution passes and we just appoint someone?
Michael, do you want to be on it? Absolutely.
Okay, let's put Mr. Gangona on the JPA there.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that the council also appoint an alternate because at times when we cannot get a council member to attend, we need to have staff or another elected official available.
Ms. Christensen, would you like to be on?
I would love it.
Okay, there you go. You've got your two appointments. Let me thank everybody who came out tonight. Supervisor Pine, thank you very much for being here tonight. To all the people from the county. And to the residents who came up with the great questions. And like we said, Stephen's going to stay behind in case you have more questions. Please look for him, give you some more details. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're moving on to the next item under public hearings. This is an introduction of an ordinance to adopt updated model water-efficient landscape ordinance. Mr. Sweetland, good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor members of the City Council. Tonight's public hearing has been duly noticed and published. Staff is recommending your adoption of a regional model water landscape ordinance crafted with the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency and other member agencies. This effort conforms with expedited regulations by the Department of Water Resources in response to Governor Brown's April 1st drought executive order to increase water efficiency standards on outdoor landscapes. This proposal would repeal Section 1741 of the Daily City Municipal Code enacted in 2010 and replace it with this model ordinance to conform with statewide regulations. The ordinance is technical in nature and intends to provide water efficiency on new and rehabilitated landscapes. The submitted ordinance is at least as effective as the state model in that it lowers the threshold of new development projects to an average of 500 square feet and rehabilitated landscapes to 1,000 square feet. In addition to efficiency standards, the ordinance addresses site stormwater capture and limitations on turf coverage. Much of the provisions of this model ordinance will apply to new projects that come under design review. With that, staff will answer any questions of the City Council.
All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Sweetland?
I got a lot of questions. Well, not a lot, but I mean, I read all 30 pages. I, I didn't quite get it. I'm assuming with, you know, big acreage and stuff, there's a lot of rules. But for the ordinary person like myself, I, my landscaping has been established for more than 20 years. I might want to replace a tree or a bush or plant some roses or do something like that. What effect does this have on me?
Would have none.
None. Okay, that's what I thought. But I saw anyone out here who's panicking that they have to do something different with their yard. You don't. We always encourage people to save water where they can. And this is the first time we've talked about gray water too, right? This is the first.
The land, the ordinance allows for the application of gray water. It's not something that's readily available here in Daily City, but other Bosca agencies have plans of.
Oh, okay. So that if the city wanted to go, go forward with a gray water program, it would fit in with this?
That's the intent, that's the intent behind it.
Okay. Great.
Anything else, Jen?
No.
Okay, Mr. Gangona?
Patrick, if you were to, to look at this and say, what would Governor Brown's executive order, the, the most cogent, salient part of it be?
Most of it's going to be dealing with the lessening of the amount of turf that is being put in in order to then take a look at how we are then progressing with the drought. So much of it is to foster on the drought tolerant as well as native plants and less dependency or less allowance on the turf, which is a high-use irrigation.
Thank you. That was my question.
All right. I have no cards on this, so let me have, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we need a motion for the city attorney to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daily City, repealing and replacing Chapter 17.41 of the Daily City Municipal Code regarding water conservation in landscaping regulations.
Okado. Thank you very much. And I need a council member to introduce the ordinance?
I would love to.
All right, Ms. Christensen, let's have you introduce this ordinance. All right, thank you.
Behalf of all the people who have yards.
Okay, we're on to public appearances, oral communications. I have one card. Ms. Sylvia Alvarez Lynch, good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Unfortunately, I recently saw on TV and read in the newspaper that Daily City is being sued because council members Canapa Torres and Buena Ventura voted to deny a small business gun and repair shop owner, who is a retired police officer and most importantly, a veteran. There was nothing in our laws that allowed them to deny this business and now we are being sued for their illegal votes. Big lawsuit. And guess who has to pay for the lawyers? You guessed it, we, the taxpayers, will be footing the bill and you make illegal votes and we have to pay for it. Council member Canapa is also being sued individually because of his illegal personal actions. And guess who has to pay for his lawyers? Yes, again, you guessed it right, we, the taxpayers, will have to pay for his lawyers too. I am not alone in my outrage regarding your actions. Daily City is in a financial crisis. The Daily City budget has been underfunded $10 million consecutively for the last three years and more. We constantly hear about having to cut back on services to the public and the possibility of closing libraries and a fire station, not to mention other programs. Now we find out that your behavior is going to cost us tons of money for lawyers and who knows how many more millions in a settlement. If the lawyers that we have to pay for to defend you should lose your case, how many more millions will it cost Daily City in legal fees should the NRA decide to help the small businessman defend his rights against Daily City? Two of you who took a vote, Buena Ventura and Torres, are lawyers. And you, Mr. Canapa, are running for San Mateo Supervisor. Let me just say that our trust should be questioned in your judgment calls. You have now placed us in further financial jeopardy. I think the three of you should have some sense of shame for not doing your research before taking a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any appointments to any boards or commissions?
Yes, I have one, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to appoint to the personnel board, Juslyn Manalo. She has applied for the personnel board. I think you all have received her applications. She has a bachelor's of arts degree in Asian American Studies, a master's in public administration from San Francisco State University and as well as she's on different, various, belongs to different various organizations. I think she's qualified for the position and making that appointment at the recommendation for the appointment at this time.
A second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, could, could you repeat the name of the individual council member? I didn't get that.
Juslyn, J-U-S-L-Y-N, Manalo, M-A-N-A-L-O.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, I think we do like a, we don't need a roll call, do we? Just a motion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, she's appointed.
Great, thank you.
Any other ones?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we're on to reports from the council committees. I don't think there were any. Yep, I don't see them back here. Yeah, okay, so there's no council committees. How about from the city council? Hearing none, anything from the staff?
Hi, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have one.
For years, whether I was standing there or sitting up here, when people are campaigning for office and they violate the law, I step up and say something about it. And if any of you out there ever catch me violating the law, please come up to the podium and nail me. Part of the problem, recently, I received a number of emails from a gentleman up in Southern Hills who said that there was a very large elect Canapa trailer parked on the street. First of all, I'm sure Mr. Canapa knows it's illegal to park a trailer on any street in Daily City. But Mr. Benedetti's serious concern was the, it's on a hill and that the trailer was aimed out into the street so that if it ever, it had a couple of rocks behind the tires, but if it were to catch the wind and roll, it would hit right into traffic and into people's cars. And it was not removed for at least five days after Mr. Benedetti contacted Mr. Canapa. But I want to make sure that it stays off the streets and that we don't have that problem in the future. And Mr. Benedetti unfortunately could not be here tonight, but asked me if I would bring it up. So can you guarantee us it won't be there?
I do have a city council report.
Okay.
I wanted to just update you on a couple of events I've been to. So there was a lot of things going on with the, the Daily City Colma Chamber of Commerce. One, we had the huge opportunity, it was really exciting. But H&R Block has just opened a location in Colma. And so that was really, really exciting because there were a lot of business owners from throughout the area. Second thing that I wanted to report on, and I wanted to, getting a lot of positive feedback from our residents, my email box is full, numerous phone calls, was about the compostables, the composting. And so I think it's kudos, I want to recognize the city manager and Julie and Allied Waste for what they've done in terms of, you know, the outreach. And so I wanted to say a couple of things. One, that's, that's very, very serious. I had the opportunity to speak to the students from Jefferson High School and I was rather surprised at how engaged they were. And we talked about various issues. And one of the things that, that really struck me, and they were challenging me on, on multiple questions about, you know, the function of local government, how does the city work? And it really sort of gave me a lot of hope. And it gave me hope in that there are young people, there are futures. So I want to recognize the students of Jefferson. I also had the opportunity to speak with, with Westmore students. And so our young people are really engaged in the process. And I think what the city's done around our outreach efforts, around social media, really connecting with people, whether it's through Twitter and Facebook, it's having an impact because a lot of them are using that platform. And finally, let me just say this. I've had the opportunity to visit all our senior centers, Mr. Mayor, and talk with them about how the services we're delivering and how we're doing. And I will tell you that the responses that I've gotten from our community members. And I will tell you that the responses that I've gotten from our community members have been just extraordinarily positive. I'll give you an example. Senior, at Dolger Senior Center, has only been there three or four months, Daly City resident, basically says he has nowhere to go. Nowhere to go, so he spends his whole day, and I don't, I didn't venture into where, if he lives in a home, if he, he lives in a cult, whatever he, whatever his domicile was, but he said because of the services that we have at the Dolger Senior Center, that his life has been transformed. And so at the end of the day, I look at the council here, and we take these responsibilities very seriously. And I know when we're up here, we always try to look at what's the best interest of our community. That's why we're all here in public service. And so I want to just tell you that I'm proud of the staff, proud of my colleagues, and the work that we can do, continue to do is meaningful. And I'm sorry to be long-winded, Mr. Mayor, but I was just, I was touched on multiple levels these past several weeks, so thank you.
Thank you.
So can we count on you to take that trailer off the streets?
Let's, let's keep going. That's not related to city council work. One other thing I just wanted to mention, on Thursday last week, I had the distinct honor to address the folks that were here on a state of cities. Thanks, Judith. The state of the cities addressed by myself and the mayor of Colma. We had a really nice, a, a number of people attending, and I was able to make that address last week as well. Is there, are there any reports from the staff? Thanks, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to highlight that this morning, we had a very important event here. We swore in
Yeah.
A whole cadre of new police officers, about fourteen of them, I guess, as well as recognize
Good job.
Promotions of two individuals to the position of sergeant, or three, rather, and two individuals who were promoted to lieutenant. And those two lieutenants became police officers when I was assistant city manager back in nineteen ninety-eight. So I was very proud. And I just want to share with the council and the public who are here and those who are listening that what I shared at that event this morning is how proud we are of our police department. And number one, because the class of fourteen new police officers are among the most highly educated that we have seen. They all came in with not only their police academy training, but in many cases, multiple college degrees, associate degrees, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, a highly educated police force. And those sergeants, those three sergeants who were appointed are long-term dedicated Daly City police officers who finally made it up the, the chain of command and have become supervisors now and are part of the leadership of our department. And the two lieutenants have had stellar careers in our department and now will become a part of the command staff here and will make huge contributions, and I expect will be candidates to be captain and maybe chief somewhere down the line. I share all of this with you because, as I mentioned this morning to the audience of over a hundred friends and family and relatives, you know, there's so much negativity in the news today about law enforcement and the relationship of police officers in communities, the lack of trust. And it makes me very proud that during my entire tenure here, both as assistant city manager and city manager, that we've not had those kinds of things happen in Daly City. And I know it's, it's not one individual who has made that happen, it's been a series of police chiefs and, and leaders in our department, but the department leadership we have today and the people that they are bringing in to our police department for the future make me feel very confident that this community will not just remain a safe community, but that we will have leaders in our department who will make a huge difference in making our community better. And I just want to commend the chief and Captain Gomez who are here, Captain Hensley was part of the session this morning. They've done, the three of them have done a great job in selecting both these new officers and selecting those who were promoted. And the model that they have built in our department is second to none, and I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, that brings us to the adjournment, and tonight we have one adjourned memory, and I'll ask the council to say a few words. Last Wednesday evening, we lost Carol Klett. Carol Klett was, I think she was here for about twenty years. She was on the city council, served as mayor, councilwoman. Carol passed away in her home in Las Vegas, next to her son and her husband, surrounded by family, and she was always one of the sweetest, hardest women to get along with because she had Daly City in her heart and in her soul and always kept us honest. She was our conscious, she was our guide, and we shall miss her deeply. Let me have the council, if they want to say a few words.
Yes.
Start with Mr. Buena Ventura.
So, you know, I, I, I had known that Carol had been sick, and it, it was very hard to, to take and try to understand what, what happened. But she was very sick, and there isn't going to be a memorial because Carol, even to her dying days, had, had said that she didn't want the city to spend any money on her. And I, I just thought that was so telling of who she was and how much she cared about the city. Even though she was physically gone when she moved to Las Vegas, she, she always kept in touch, and she was always concerned, and she knew the issues that Daly City was facing. She just never stopped, and I suppose that's going to be still the way it is going to be today when she's up in heaven, and she's going to be looking down upon us, wondering if we're still doing the right thing in the best interests of the city. So Carol, I'm going to miss you, and I know that you're still watching over us, and God bless you.
Thank you. I'll let them go. I'll go last.
Okay. Let me go. Mr. Canepa?
Wow. Well, it was kind of a shock. I think if Altalia was known as Mr. Daly City, then Carol was certainly known as Mrs. Daly City. I remember when I first got on the council, you know, we had, we had some turbulence, and we differed on a lot of issues, but over a period of years, Carol really became a confidante, a person I could trust, a person when it came to various issues I could work with. I think Carol was an exceptional, besides being an exceptional person, a very smart and strategic elected official. She represented us extraordinarily well for six years on the Bay Area Quality Management District. She cared deeply about Daly City. I mean, she was, she went from a neighborhood person and, I don't know if she really set out to be an elected official, but she, she really served the community, and she, she never lost that feeling. I think at the end of the day, she wasn't trying to be an aspiring politician, but was just one who cared about the community and wanted to serve her community. I'm going to miss Carol a lot. I know she was sick. We talked several weeks back, but I think her legacy in Daly City is, is cemented, and I think for, you know, the elected officials up here and for future elected officials, we could learn a lot from her. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Christensen? Nothing? Okay, Mr. Gengona?
Okay. You know, I, I met Carol in nineteen ninety-two, and I met her on the campaign trail, actually, and, and when I, we ran against each other in nineteen ninety-three, we became pretty good friends, and it was as a result of, you know, these, on these panels and things like that. Tried to look at the time that I had spent with Carol over the years. That's, that's four hundred and forty meetings. Those of you that are out there and have had the opportunity to sit through one of these things, one of these meetings, it's four hundred and forty of them I did with her, at least. That's twenty-two meetings a year over, over twenty years. We spent every election night together, every election night, nineteen ninety-two all the way to twenty-ten, the last one, except in twenty-fourteen. Now, Carol, I did not know that Carol was ill. I found out because Ray had sent an email to the council members that, that she was ill, and I really contemplated whether or not I should call her. A lot of you might know that we didn't see eye to eye the last couple of years, but I did it. I called her, and I got a chance to speak to her on Thursday a couple of times, on Friday, left messages with her on Saturday. She saw pictures of me and my dog, left messages with her that her daughter Debbie had told me that all the way up until the end, she was listening to and responding to. And I only say this to say that, and when we spoke, I mean, the, the idea was that we had done more and been through more than, with each other than anyone else had been other than our spouses. You know, she was there for my first wedding, the birth of my son, purchase of my house, divorce. When I wanted to get married again, I asked her to marry, so she's in all my wedding pictures, twice. Spent a lot of time together, you know. Dave, you, you mentioned the fact that she learned how to be a, a sharp politician. You know, when I, when I met her, she was a housewife that complained a lot, standing over there, and through the years, she developed, she developed a political acumen that, as a result of her connectedness to the community. I told Carol that, that I'd never be the same as a result of knowing her, that Daly City would never be the same, and I still feel that today. So when Debbie told me that they didn't want a memorial, and then when Tim called again half an hour after she had died, he reiterated that they were going to, her wishes were to take her ashes, be cremated, and for them to be scattered at Red Rock, out in Nevada. So, you know, we aren't going to have anything, I mean, I hope that, that we do kind of do some sort of recognition, but I will say this, though, I'm going to miss you, Carol. Like I said, Daly City and me, myself, will never be the same. Rest in peace.
Two other folks who want to adjourn in memory tonight, Susan G. Tone, who is Detective W. Tone's paternal mother, and John McEntee, that's Police Assistant Trenton Waterman's maternal grandfather, who also passed away, and the city sends their condolences to both Detective Tone and Police Assistant Waterman on their losses. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.